I'd like to refine the minutes for the meeting of May the 5th. If you've had a chance for a few of those minutes, please do your pleasure. If not, take a moment to leave. I'll bring my next motion to the public, Mr. Ritz. Motion for the second, Mr. Ritz.
I have second.
Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing done. All are in favor of this sentence. Please sit down and raise your hand. Set a move. Mr. Bridges, you're on the dock for tonight. If you would, it follows yours, sir.
Okay. Thank y'all. I appreciate it. I'll move. This is my sister Anne Clayton from North Carolina. She's in town.
Nice to meet you.
And you can see all the names up there.
(laughing).
Any introductions? She's just visiting. I was just gonna try to see, you know, how things are prog- or let you guys know how things are progressing. On the bathroom, I emailed Donna. Kind of at a standstill now, based on doing everything that, you know, the ordinances and the codes, you know, would have me do. I've done everything that I can do. The city has certain, obviously, stipulations that have to go by, and I've done all that I can to a point where the county has the jurisdiction over the septic tank, and it's not feasible. They've already sent me, and I sent you that. Did you get the letter?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. So, you know, I just, I'm gonna go by the, you know, the ordinances and I don't make the rules you guys do. So, you know, I'm gonna play by them and just need to know kind of where we stand or where we go from here. I mean, as far as I understand, you know, it's back in your court, whatever you guys want to do. I can't, I can't physically do what you guys are asking me to do. I've stated that many, many times. You know, I've got other people. As you guys do the same thing, you have professionals advise you, and you have to go on their professional advice. That's, that's what I've done. And so, now it's a point where, you know, you guys gotta tell me what, what I need to do.
At this point, Joe, it's my understanding that today you asked for a final inspection. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, with that, we have to, there again, on your request and do the final inspection, even though we know that, you know, according to you, that it has not been done yet. So, what we have to do is order the final inspection, and then, I understand that according to the regs, that if it doesn't comply, that, you know, we revoke the business license that was issued earlier in the week to the tenant, and that would be our next step, as I see it.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's fine. Like I say, I mean, as long as we're both, you know, living by the same rules, you make them, I live by them. You make them, you live by them. That's, that's fine. I don't know if, if I would be jumping ahead, but since you jumped ahead, I will, I will take the liberty. And I, you know, would definitely ask for a hearing, and we would just continue to, to go about the process. So, how, how does that, how does that, how does that work?
Well, we're just gonna, there again, we'll just take it one step at a time and, you know, do the inspection as you requested, revoke the permit that has already been issued, and then you would ask for the hearing.
Okay. Alright. I've got, I got the key to the building. I'd be glad to, you know, let you guys, you can have it, or if the lasters are, be so kind as they have been in the past, you know, to sort of hold on the key, however you want to do it.
Right. I would feel, it's my opinion, that an internal inspection wouldn't be necessary if, in fact, there is no water attached to the building, no application has been made for water to be turned on, no septic tank there, and we pretty well know that it doesn't have a bathroom. So, everything else, as I understand, has been taken care of. So, you know, we could go in the building, but, you know.
That, that, yeah. I mean, I, I, you know, these are formalities. If that's the way we're gonna do it, then that's just how we have to do it. So, I mean...
It's all with you.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it's clear in there that the clerk or designee can make that determination, so I don't know, you know, that's, that's up to y'all. What, so is that something that you need, you need more time to do, or? I mean, if you got, you guys, you know, want to issue something to me in writing right now, that's fine, too. I mean, I, you know, then I can...
There again, we'll play by the rule books, and we'll do that tomorrow. And then, you'll be notified, and the tenant that we issued the business license to, we owe it to them to give the simultaneous recognition.
I, I can get a written statement from him, but I'm, I'm gonna sort of represent him as it does see fit. There, there's, you know, an avenue to do that, and that's two-part. One is, you know, it's my building, so I'm, I've got more of an interest in this than he does, but he's also dealing with some family health issues, and it's not something he's gonna be able to, to do anyway.
We still have to notify the city.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. That's his, his business license. That's, that's pretty much all I have. I still am following through with a feasibility study on the library. I've gotten some figures. I hadn't gotten everything quite finished, as far as laying it out as a cost involved to get that building where we can use it. Refresh my memory on that, though. If you're saying that it, that it, right now, it's up to code and everything just as a library, or, and then to, to expand that, I could go back and look at my notes, but what, do you remember what it's gonna entail?
Yes, it'd be, it's quite a lot to be in, to entail. I'll go over that with you in private. I'll go over and tell you everything that needs to be done, but this council would still have to act on whether or not we would want to do that, regardless of what the cost is and regardless of who's gonna be paying.
Sure.
So, but I'll go over all that with you as to the size and stuff, but you pretty well heard from the previous meetings what it had, how it had to comply.
I just, I mean, I just know it had to be upgraded, but I think there, there's some flexibility within the rules as far as, you know, in certain cases, you, if you had a one bathroom versus the different sexes bathroom, I mean, you know, and I don't know exactly what y'all are gonna require, you know, how that's gonna...
Just gonna go right by the rig, sir, but I'd like to, I'd be glad to go over it all in detail whenever you, whenever the council can be in a point of this.
Oh, I mean, if you, you know, if you don't mind, we could do that. I mean, if you don't mind just doing that in an email, that'd be, that'd be the best, best way for me. So then, that way, we don't have, neither one of us have any misunderstanding as to what was said or what was interpreted or what was, what was heard, if that's okay with you.
I would like to have a preliminary conversation with you, Bob, so that I know exactly what you're asking.
I'm just asking you what, what I need to do up there to make you guys happy and get, as far as what it would entail to make it feasible to utilize. Now, and, and I understand, this is, this is all thanks to Clay. We're look, we're putting stuff out on the table. We're not, you know, I'm not taking anything off the table. I'd like to put stuff on the table so that we could have a conversation about it as opposed to, you know, not even getting there. I mean, you don't know what it's gonna cost. I don't know what it's gonna cost, and it, and the council may, may decide that's something they're willing to, to look at. I mean, can you, I can't make that decision for you, and I don't know that you can make that decision for them. I, I don't know. But that's, that's, that's the whole purpose. I committed to doing this, and it's taken a little bit longer than I thought, but I'm doing it.
We can ask the question to council that if that were to be done, regardless of the cost, whether it be $1.98 or $5,000, if that would be something that they would do, we could ask that question of council now.
Sure. You, I mean, that's, that's up to you if you want, yeah. I mean, I'd be glad to do that.
Anyone like to call? The question is to whether or not, regardless of the cost or expense, whether or not we would be willing to use the library at the city?
Boy, I have an answer.
Sure.
Well, since I've already, you know, told the council that because of our relationship that I would not be voting on any proposals such as this, I would like for the whole council to be here. I'd like Derek to be able to put his input, too.
That'd be fine. Would you suit you, sir?
Yeah, that's up, that's up to y'all. I, I, you know.
Couldn't, I would, I would...
I think what Joe has asked me for is just what was David's requirements be for public facility, public use facility, and that would answer your questions as to what the bathroom would have to look like to be a full-service public facility.
We have gone over that repeatedly, but I would be glad to repeat it again.
I mean, I, I'm talking to Henry Cole, which did some work for me up here, and, uh, 'cause I originally got some stuff from another builder, which actually said, you know, ain't got time. Henry's, who we refer to as Harry Rivers, Chris and all them, he, he had, Henry working for him for years. Anyway, Henry's asking me a lot of questions about, well, you know, you can do this, and you can do that, and depending on this, it could be, and I'm like, well, you know, maybe we just need to get it in writing, or, you know, what, what is the bare minimum? What, or what is it that's gonna make you guys happy if this were even a possibility? You know, what's, what's gonna make it legal? You know, you guys, I mean, we're both living by the same set of rules, and we both, you know, you know, need, need to know exactly what we're dealing with.
Joe, convenience, give me a call, and I'll discuss it with you, and at that point, we'll determine what you want us to, what we'll send you, and we'd be glad to do that.
I mean, I, I don't, a phone call does not do me any good. I'd rather you email me what, what you require, or the council. We're talking right now. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing else more to talk about. It's, it's, email me what you want, so I can take that to Henry and say, "Henry, I need a bid on this." Go back and look if you have to. He's already looked at it. He's already, you know, talking about some odd things with the roof and all this, and making, you know, the shelves in there and different things that he's noticing that, that needs to be adjusted. I just need to know from you guys, you know. I mean, if you want me to, I, I, you know, we talked about this. I said I would do it. The council approved it, so that'd be fine. I'm not asking you to vote on it, you know, as far as a cost or what, not right now. I'm just, I'm gonna lay it out there.
Good. Touch coverage. Anything else for Bridges?
Um, I think that's, I think that's it.
At this time, we will ask the public for comments, and we'll start to the left, go to the right if it suits. Any public comments or... Ma'am?
I asked one time about a problem of missing people that were missing from the council meetings that were councilman fairly often, and I don't know that it was ever addressed or whatever. We just have people that are out an awful lot, councilmen that are out an awful lot. And he just made reference to you needed the full council to do something, so that obviously deter, hinder us whatever it is, decision-making now till next month, which could have dealt with today had the full council been here, and it's usually the same people.
I understand. Mr. Bridges, any further comments, sir?
Uh, no, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming in. If you have a comment, you'll stand, give your name and your address, and just any comments you would like to make in front of this council.
Oh, yeah. I'm Earl Aiman. I stay at, uh, 6:04 Highway Fifth Fourth, Sharpsburg. And this Dollar General, the Times, oh my goodness, 4 o'clock in the morning, they're out there.
6:30 in the morning, they're out there.
9 o'clock at night, they're out there. Now, I understand they're building no store, but come on, that late and that early in the morning? No.
Question, Mr. Aiman, has that occurred any more? That, that early in the morning, since the first time it occurred, and my attention was called to it?
No, but who says that it won't happen again?
They've been out there at 6:30 for the last two weeks, every morning. They said they don't want to start at 8:00.
But it was my understanding that we did have a complaint, and you turned it over to a council member. The council member called, and it was handled within minutes. Is that correct, sir?
Okay. You say, you say that it's not gonna happen again?
I wouldn't think so. I've talked to people. If it does, I would certainly like to know about it, because they said no.
So, what time is a usual, usual start time?
I would, record this as hours, probably at that point.
What is that, what did the record detail?
I, we can't determine that, but it depend, it would depend on too many things, but I would say 7:00 in the morning would be fine.
They said, I sat down talking, they said they're supposed to start at 8:00. They started at 6:30.
Yeah. You see a violation of that? Like I said, give me a call. You do have my phone number.
Yes, and it's, and Saturdays, which Saturdays haven't occurred in the last week or so, but still.
I think all that's behind them, and because they're through with the biggest part of that work, and I know it's a nuisance to start with, but I think the biggest part of that is over. But if it doesn't, please let me know.
Alright, but it, I, my thing, it shouldn't even occur, not no 4 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. Told them exactly the same thing, and, uh, but it happens, even minor violation, let me know and we'll do something about it immediately. In fact, when you requested that first time, I came over to your house three different times that day. Knocked on the door, and, you know, you were not at home, or didn't come to the door.
We stayed, uh, we stayed, we stayed there, no one called. Then my son stayed there, no one never showed up. And then we, we were gonna wait all night and day, but we left. But we had, we had other things to do, but at the time, there's nobody show up.
Within 10 minutes after I got the call, I was knocking on your door.
Well, I don't know what time you got, I don't know what time you got the call, but I know we were gonna sit there and just wait. But we sat there, sitting out there waiting for the lonely.
And we were out there, we, like, two hours sitting out there. We were out there talking.
Yeah. So, no one showed up, but that's...
The day that I got the call, I'm not gonna argue with it.
Right, right.
But I was there within 10 minutes. I came to your door twice, came back again, came home, came back again. At that time, the door was open, but I still, I'm hollering, knocking on the door, ringing the doorbell, and...
If you ring the doorbell, it's not a doorbell.
Doorbell, it's not a doorbell.
There's a door button on the carport side.
You can just push it, it was, it don't work.
I didn't know that.
So...
And I'm knocking on the door, and I'm hollering, hello. But anyway, I'm not gonna argue with you or about it, but if you see a violation, please let me know. And we're sorry about the inconvenience. We really are.
I mean, that's the whole thing. Y'all don't live over there, so it's a lot different when y'all don't have to deal with that.
It's the noise constantly, every, every...
Every morning. You, you up there asleep, and you hear this noise all morning long. And then you can't sleep 'cause you have to get up. And not, like I said, it's gonna keep happening. It's getting to the point where it's getting annoying.
I think you'll, I think you'll agree that the worst part of that is over.
Honestly, honestly, I don't, because at the back of the building, it gonna be air conditioning, and the noise gonna be there.
And the stuff getting dropped off.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the noise is gonna ever, for, once they fire them, air condition's up, and I, if I even stay, there's four units back there, behind that building, and the noise gonna be there. I don't, I don't think we gonna, never, never have no peace.
They'll do anything to mitigate that sound problem.
I, I really hope so, and I would appreciate it, but until that time comes...
Okay. What about the deliveries at late at night? What are you gonna do about that?
We'll handle that when we get to it, sir. It's all we can do. That's all we can do.
Y'all, you...
What do you mean, late at night?
Delivery at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, trucks.
Truck, 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 truck. With the motor, they gonna sit out there with the motor running.
They gonna sit out there hiking.
All night.
They don't, anyway, that's already been handled.
Okay. How's it been handled?
We handled it in the initials, and they said that they would not make deliveries at that time of night. That's what they told us, and we gotta go by it until there's a violation.
They said they wouldn't be out there at that time of the morning, either, but they were. At 4:00 in the morning, they were.
That's a construction crew. That's somebody different.
Okay, but like, like we're saying, y'all don't live over there. Y'all don't have to deal with that every day, every morning. Y'all live on the other side of town.
I live right across the street from another merchant, and they have deliveries, but they come later in the morning, too. And sometimes a garbage truck comes...
What store? Is it the Dollar General store? Every store don't deliver at the same time?
That's what I'm saying. So, we, we gave regulations and ordinances to Dollar General, and they'll follow. Okay.
Man, y'all, like I said, the house being that close to that store.
Yeah.
And all that noise, all the time. Like I said, y'all live on the other side of town. Y'all don't live right there. Y'all don't live right there, right there where that store has been built there. So, y'all don't have to deal with all the extra noise, especially when you trying to sleep.
There again, not in this open meeting, but I'll tell you about a situation that occurs that I have to put up with all the time, because I live the same distance from a business off the same road. And I'll discuss it with you in more detail, tell you all about it, but there's nothing, because it's a commercial area, and I knew I was moving into, close to a commercial zone, I can't complain. But please, if you want to get in touch with me later, I'll tell you all about it. We'll do a poll of council.
Hold on. I'm, I'm part of the public tonight. Can I share your seat? I just wanted to be able to face y'all and see everybody. Wendell, you know the incident that happened. I called you at 5:00 in the morning, and I called the police. What the police told me was that that construction company wanted to run 24 hours a day. They had every right to do so, which told me as a citizen and a resident, I had no protection. I want to know what this town is gonna do to protect the citizens from that happening ever again.
If you're asking that question, there's nothing that we can do to keep it from happening again. Now, what we can do after it happens, yes, we can, but if it, it hadn't happened, they know what we do about something that hadn't happened.
No, it did happen, though.
But you said, what would it do if it happens again?
What I'm saying is that if Cowiey County Police said that construction company can run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if that's what they choose, that means there will be a complete disturbance in any residence, residential area, which is unfortunately where this particular store resides. What I'm asking you is I know the store is over halfway complete, and this is coming to an end. There will be another resident within this town that I'm trying to find out what we have and what we need to adjust and change so that it does not happen to another residential neighborhood.
Right, then...
4:00 AM is unacceptable.
It is.
And that guy lied when I was down there and said he was not there at 4:00 AM until I approached when you were talking to him, and then he admitted, yes, he was there at 4:15 AM.
Like I said, what has happened, and when you called me with a complaint, it was immediately happened, right?
You did come down there. I requested you to come down there. I was extremely upset that they would do that in the middle of the week at 4:00 AM when children have school and people have work.
Right.
That was extremely disrespectful.
And what we can do is, mayor and council, we can put in some other ordinances that say such and such, and then if that is violated, then we can do something about it.
So, is it true that they can run 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
According to what the sheriff's department says, in a commercial zone and under construction ordinance, they could, they know they do it, but...
Okay, but we're in town of Sharpsburg and have our own rules and ordinances.
We can put in those ordinances to protect our citizens, pass that on to the sheriff's department, but that's something we have to enact among ourselves.
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
That's what we need to do.
I know it's too late for me, but it will happen to another resident as more building comes in. That's my concern is for the residents.
Then, as a member of the council, we need to get together and coin that.
I agree. I suggested on a work session last, the last meeting I was in. I felt like...
We are where we are right now.
Okay.
And I'm saying, if you want to do that, then that's something we should do.
I, I really do think that's something that we should do for the residents.
Right. We can work with clerk to set up that, and we'll make it happen.
Um, there was, the last time I discussed it with you, there was an issue in cost. Attorneys' fees and cost that we were gonna incur having to redo some ordinances.
If it's, if it's a viable ordinance, then we'll have to buy the bullet. That's not a problem. We'll have to do it. We'll have to do what we have to do.
I guess my other issue was that we had no authority to find these people for operating at 4:00 AM. And, and that's another thing I've been talking about for years, is code enforcement, and it never seems to happen. So, what Clay told me is that you are not a code enforcement officer.
I'm not.
Okay, so, but you have been out before upon complaints and asked people to clean their yards up.
As a member of the mayor and council, I have, yes.
Right, so I...
And you have the same authority.
Okay, and I went down there and told them to shut their operation down at 4:00, and they said no. I did ask them.
Right. But there again, what we just got there saying, if the ordinance is not on the book, we can't enforce it.
So, there's no protection right now at all for any of our citizens?
Not in that commercial zone. So, that's something as council member and these council members and mayor, that we need to handle. If it needs to be done, then we need to do it.
And you, you had mentioned something about the ordinances that, that we gave Dollar General. What were those particular ordinances that we gave Dollar General when you were replying to Mr. Amy? You said we gave, we gave Dollar General some ordinances, I guess to follow by. I don't know what those were. Do you know what those were that you gave them?
I'm sorry. I'm still not with your question. I'm sorry.
I don't know if we said ordinances, but we, we discussed when they were persons, person, the property, that they were just guidelines. They said they would, you know, deliver in the middle of the night. Or they just gave assurances that they wouldn't be doing that.
And this is while the store is opening and operating. You have specific hours that they are not to deliver and disturb past certain times. Is that what you mean by that?
We do not have that on the book. That might be something that we could put on the book, but I don't see how we could enforce it, because every business out there is going to have deliveries. I, I'll bring up a point now that I started to make, and I said I'd make you private, but since you brought up that part of it, I live in the same distance from the federal post office, and one of the most annoying things in the world at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning is when they make their deliveries for the postal. They have big aluminum trailers, and they have the big metal baskets. They take those baskets back in and drop them. You can hear them to the next cabin. I can't, there's nothing I can do about that. Am I going to complain to the federal government? Am I going to complain to the city?
I don't know. I'm just complaining to my government. I'm starting local, and I'm just complaining to my government. So, I don't know if we need to address this, but I'm not just speaking for my own protection. It could happen to you. It could happen to Keith. It could happen to Clay. It could happen to anybody. And I just think that, that's something that we need to have. If somebody can call the police about a noise disturbance next door to them for a party, and those people be sighted or shut down because they're playing their music too loud, there's no reason, I think, that a residence should not be able to complain about a dozen concrete trucks and lights that lit up Hartsfield Airport out there at 4:00 in the morning, and you saw it, you were there. I just don't see why there's not a problem. Where's the, where was the problem when the residents complained about that? It's still a noise issue, is what I was saying.
Well, I agree with what I said. This is something that you need to get with council, sit down in a work session or otherwise, and come up with ordinances to protect us in, in those instances.
And I think that's fair. I think a 7:00 AM start time is a normal, reasonable start time for any construction crew. I think by, you know, 7:00 o'clock at night, they should be done. That gives them 12 hours a day. I think that's totally reasonable, and if that's not something that we have to protect the residents, then that's something we need to consider as a council.
I agree. Let's do that.
Can I make one additional comment?
Not right now.
Oh, okay.
Clay, no, approach me. Anything else, select?
Yes. My neighbor at the very end of one Sunset Drive complained about trash from the construction site being in her yard every day and was making her kids pick up their trash.
Now, that ordinance is on the book.
Okay. I told, I gave her your number and asked her to call you.
Yes, that is on the books. They have to, there is regulations even down to the number of trash cans that have to be on site, and I can pull that away.
Well, she's having, she's having an issue with that. It has been...
Yeah, ask her to give a call, 'cause that I can take care of right away.
She also complained about the porta body being too close to her home.
Porta body's as long as they're 100 feet away from her house, then it's on the construction site, and...
But from her land or from her actual house?
From her, from her block land.
I don't think that's why. I don't think that's why her fee is...
I checked that out, too, because there is a regulation that, um, says construction site, and not only that...
'Cause it's literally across Alamo Wiley Street.
I checked it out.
So she wasn't happy with the porto potty being within smelling distance of her mailbox, and she said that the noise on the weekends is unbearable, so those were three concerns she had, I asked her to be here tonight, but she was unable to make it due to another obligation.
Right.
That's...
Hello?
That's all I have.
Keith? Court's comments? And Paul, your...
Just wanted a clarification, you said that you had given them, uh, the, had an understanding with them about the times that they could deliver, when they were talking about, I don't know whether it was before or after, you didn't make that clear, but then you sounded like that's not enforceable.
Uh, it's gonna be hard to enforce it, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna open that can of worms, all I can tell you is that we discussed that with them when they asked us about coming there, and we said, hey, is there gonna be any deliveries in the middle of the night and all this stuff? They said, no, that's not our routine, somebody from the store, they're supposed to meet during store hours, and that's not our routine, that's not gonna happen. Now, if there is a violation, there again, we need to know about it, and there, or do something about it.
But I guess she's trying, what is the actual violation?
There is no, there is nothing on the books right now that says that they can or can't deliver, just like we can't tell...
So is that something else we need to specify, is delivery times, or, you can't be in violation of something that's not there?
You can, but I will tell you this, if anyone ever put it before a court case, we are going to be a dead loser, because we telling the business when they can and cannot set their limits, but we can put it on the books, there again, if you wanna discuss it, then that's the same meeting.
Yeah, I think that should be, I think that's fair.
Okay.
One other thing, this zoning, you said it was in a zoning commercial, but zoning's changed three times that I can remember since I've lived here, so what, it probably wasn't. So how do you, it seems to me like if you're in a place and it's zoned one way, you can get screwed 'cause it got zoned a different way.
Any...
And there's probably no way to answer that, but it's just an observation.
Not, I'm, not me sitting right here, there's not, but, uh, play it out, anyway, anything else come before council tonight? Hearing none, a motion for adjournment being ordered?
Motion.
Motion, so...